The public hearing is still open. Those who wish to be heard will be heard. If you have documents that you wish to present, we will receive them.
Chairman, to give to you is a package that was prepared by Chairman Whitman of the Planning Board.
This is David Pickler.
Yes, I did make it available to people earlier, just in case anyone needed. And Chairman, there is a letter addressed to the Board from Deputy Mayor Rhodes. And I did make the documents available to Ms. Daly today.
I'm Sally Rhodes, Deputy Mayor. I believe you received this technology dated September 11th from the building inspector that you have as part of your record. However, I would like to submit to you two documents, one dated June 14th, which you will be able to read, which states, this is from the building inspector. Given the new information received by the zoning board appeals at their meeting of June 12th, 2012, if this information is correct, there would appear to be a lapse of more than six months in the business located at 127 Main Street for the special use permit granted in 2006, and that in effect, the special use permit has expired. Please note, I stress, if the information is accurate and undisputable. I believe that information was notarized. The other document I would wish to submit is a document received by the village attorney by the Board of Trustees dated June 15th, which contains his opinion and the village Board's right legally to revoke the special use permit. You may read the whole document, but the cogent part is, the building inspector may however be compelled to, by the only other village actor who can direct enforcement proceedings against an owner or applicant, the village Board.
Will you say that copies are made?
Certainly, Chairman, thank you.
Katie, do you want to comment on the material you gave us from Chairman Whitman?
Chairman Whitman actually was in the clerk's office today. He sends his apologies that he is not here this evening. On the, with the contingency plan that he might not be here, he wanted me to point out to the Board, the reason for producing the packet. He's highlighted restaurant on the first page. On the second page, which was also filled out by the applicant, when considering the size and location of the use, he said, yes, restaurant in core business district is fitting and appropriate, also specifically will be, will be quality work. When it comes to the application number D, will the operations connected with a special use be more objectionable to nearby properties by reasons of noise, fumes, vibrations, or other characteristics than operations of any permitted use requiring, requiring a special use permit? And it said, the only potential aspect that may be different than any other permitted use in effect is the possibility of music, which will be appropriate and in keeping with the character of the area and will not be excessive, nor will there be a specific adverse impact as a result. Another highlighted area on the application that was filled out is that it is a restaurant, and there are notes that say, all relevant answers, I'm so sorry, I can't read the word, the second word here, or separately submitted materials to the planning board. There are minutes from the March 14th, 2006 meeting, which Chairman Whitman highlighted as a special use permit, convert existing deli into a restaurant with no exterior changes to the building. From the May 2nd, 2006 minutes, there is a note that because of the large size of the bar in relationship to the seated portion, the chair at the time, who happened to be George Danskin, as noted at the top, felt the establishment could be considered a bar as opposed to a restaurant, and therefore must adhere to the code requirements of a bar. At the previous meeting, the applicant stated that the business would be a restaurant with full food service at the bar counter. There's a copy of the special, the legal notice for the public hearing. The highlighted portion by Chairman Whitman is Dino Tiscani, who is requesting a special use permit to convert an existing deli test into a restaurant. Also highlighted by Chairman Whitman on the May 9th, 2006 minutes, the chair clarified that this applicant requests to convert 127 Main to a restaurant, and based on his meeting with Mr. Tiscani and Mr. Valdina last week, proposes the use of the underdeveloped lot on 123 Main Street for parking. The minutes from June 6th, June 6th, 2006, the highlighted portion, the distance from the residential area, applicant said that the distance from the front door to the residential district is 191 feet. He reiterated that the 200-foot distance is required for bars, not restaurants, and that his establishment is a restaurant. Also, from the same set of minutes, the highlighted portion, Mr. Tiscani said his plans to operate a restaurant seven days a week, either from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. or on a 24-hour basis. The next highlighted portion is, members also noted that the principal condition of a special use was not to create no great, was, would not, excuse me, of a special use permit was that it would create no greater impact on the community than the principally permitted use. In this case, most retail establishments close by 9:00 p.m. and most restaurants close by midnight. From the June 13th, 2006, Planning Board minutes, the highlighted portion, after a lengthy discussion regarding the classification of the establishment and the intention of the law, the majority of the Board felt that this establishment was a restaurant as opposed to a bar, and therefore did not have to adhere to the 200-foot distance to the residential district. Also highlighted is, the primary restaurant function of a restaurant would be maintained through conditions of approval. The July 18th, 2006 minutes say, a highlighted portion is, the chair emphasizes that a special use permit should not be more disturbing than a generally permitted use, pointing out that permitted retail usually closes at approximately between 9:00 and 10:00 p.m. He suggested that the resident, the restaurant close at 10:00 p.m. and noted that there are 20 seats at the bar. Also highlighted on those minutes are Ms. Heady to approve the special use permit with the following conditions, the hour of operations would be 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., no amplified music would be allowed, the seating capacity at the bar would not exceed 20, seating at tables and booths must not exceed 90, the berm must be grated, seeded, and mulched within 30 days of this approval in accordance with the plan compared by Synergy Design on 6/20/2006. There would be no additional exterior lighting. This approval would constitute site plan approval to provide associated restaurant, bar parking at 123 Main Street in accordance. There is a memo from Dave Klausert dated February 27th, 2009. Mr. Chairman Whitman bolded the portion that he thought was most important. As the Board will note, the Methodist Church on Grove Street, which operates a nursery school, is within 400 feet of the property, and 127, 127 Main Street building access in the rear is approximately 75 feet from the R2 residential zoning district boundary. The front door access of 127 Main Street buildings are located approximately 160 feet from the residential district boundary. Also highlighted on the memo from David Klausert dated February 27th, 2009, however, section 212-41D1 of the Village Code specifies that a bar cannot be located within 500 feet of a church or school, and section 212-41D2 stipulates that public ingress and egress to a bar in this zoning district must be a minimum of 200 feet from a residential district boundary. As the Board will note, the Methodist Church on Grove Street, which operates as a nursery school, is within 400 feet of the property, and the 127 Main Street building access in the rear is approximately 75 feet from the R2 residential zoning boundary. The front door access, the front access doors of the 127 Main Street building are located approximately 150 feet from this residential boundary, district boundary, pardon me. And also noted from Chairman Whitman is the approved site plan for the use of 127 Main Street in 2006.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome, sir.
Are there other matters to be presented to the Board? Yes.
I'd love to read a statement. Nelson Nash, 7 Prospect Street. I want to address two questions regarding the appeal of the expiration of the special use permit for 127 Main Street. One, was the SUP valid in the first place? And two, who deemed the SUP expired? First, the validity of the SUP. First, the 2006 Planning Board overstepped its jurisdiction by granting an SUP that was not fully compliant. An SUP for a bar should not have been granted as according to Village Code, a bar is not permitted at that location. And Ms. Bunker just talked about that. The Planning Board should have directed the applicant to apply for a variance, and the code enforcement officer, Ms. Moniz, should have alerted the Planning Board that a variance was required. Second, at the previous session of this public hearing, Trustee Rhodes pointed out that the SUP was issued to Dino Tiscani, who was not the owner, without any verification from the owner that Mr. Tiscani was acting in her name. I'd like to add that the SLA explicitly forbids convicted felons from holding a liquor license or being employed in a bar. As Mr. Tiscani is a convicted felon, and was so at the time of the SUP application, he has, she should not have been issued an SUP. Finally, the SUP was issued in 2006, yet the certificate of occupancy signed by Ms. Moniz was not issued until August 7th, 2008. And that's fact two in Ms. Moniz's September 11th, 2012 statement. According to Village Code 21238B5A, an SUP expires if it has not been exercised within one year. Any special use, special use permit not exercised within one year of the date of issuance shall expire without further hearing by the Planning Board. Ms. Moniz should not have issued a C of O to an establishment that did not have a valid SUP. Please also note that in doing so, our due process rights to appeal were directly impacted. It only became apparent that the, that the establishment was actually a bar over two years after the SUP had been issued. At the Planning Board meeting at which the SUP was approved, Mr. Tiscani clearly stated that the intention was to open a restaurant with an ancillary bar. And this was documented in the minutes which we would catch and which Mr. Whitman had just presented. By the time the business actually opened, a raucous, loud, late-night bar, complete with live music and DJs, the deadline for the appeal, the deadline to appeal the Planning Board's decision to grant the SUP had long passed. Thus, for any of the above reasons, the SUP for 127 Main Street is invalid. My second point, who deemed the SUP expired? At the first part of this public hearing, one of Ms. Tufano's lawyers presented what he termed a threshold question. Did the building inspector actually determine that the SUP had expired? He contended that if the building inspector herself did not make the determination and was simply serving as a messenger of the Board of Trustees, then, quote, "This appeal has ended because there is no determination made by the building inspector to be enforced." I would like to address this issue. Ms. Moniz, as code enforcement officer, may of course make determinations about code violations. In fact, she is obligated to do so. However, if she makes mistakes or overlooks infractions, she must be held accountable. As Ms. Moniz was not elected by village residents, it is reasonable to assume that she is accountable to her employer, those who in fact hired her, the Board of Trustees. However, Ms. Tufano's lawyers claim that Ms. Moniz is not an employee, but rather serves as an officer of the state. To investigate this claim, I contacted, I contacted the New York State Department of Code Enforcement and Administration. In a telephone conversation with Dan Nichols, the head of the regional office in Kingston, I was informed that building and fire prevention code is created by the state, and in this respect, the municipal code enforcement officer is an officer of the state. However, code concerning zoning, planning, and land use is developed and enforced by the municipality, and in this respect, the code enforcement officer is an employee of the village. Thus, the building inspector is in fact both an employee of the village and an officer of the state. As an officer of the state, she is obligated to enforce state building and fire laws. As an employee, her obligation, her obligation is to the local municipality, New Paul's Village Code. Mr. Nichols clearly stated that special use permits fall under zoning and thus under the jurisdiction of the village. Therefore, as an employee of the village, Ms. Moniz's supervisors can direct her to enforce Village Code concerning SUP expiration. Regardless of Ms. Moniz's status, New Paul's Village Code clearly indicates that the Board of Trustees may take action to prevent the use of a building that does not comply with code. And that's 21265, violations and penalties, and it's rather long, I'm going to read you a truncated version, but the original version is in my written statement. In case any building is used in violation of this chapter, and it's chapter 212 zoning, in addition to other lawful remedies, the Board of Trustees, or with their approval, the building inspector, may institute any appropriate action or proceeding to prevent such unlawful use. But all this rigmarole about who made the determination is in fact a red herring, a distraction from the central issue. To bring us back, the New Paul's Village Code simply and clearly states that an SUP expires if the authorized special use shall cease for more than six months for any reason. Thus, once the authorized special use ceases for over six months, the SUP simply expires. Neither, neither notice of expiration nor any kind of hearing are required. Business owners are expected to know the Village Code in this manner. Thus, the only question before the ZBA is whether or not the authorized special uses of a restaurant and bar have ceased for over six months. As Board members are aware, to meet the code definition of a restaurant, food must be prepared and sold on premises. To meet the definition of a bar, alcoholic beverages must be sold and consumed on the premises. At part one of this public hearing, we presented detailed evidence with documentation indicating that the authorized special uses as a bar and a restaurant had unquidically ceased for well over six months. To save time, I won't go over this again now, but I have provided a recap in my written In closing, I will answer the question posed at the beginning of my statement. Who deemed that the SUP expired? Because 127 Main Street's authorized special uses as a restaurant and a bar ceased for over a year, it is the Village Code that deems the SUP expired. The establishment that has recently opened, Shay O'Brien's, looks like a lovely restaurant, one which would enhance the village and which the neighboring residents would welcome. Unlike the bars that have intermittently operated at 127, a restaurant is not more objectionable than nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibrations, or other characteristics. The owner can simply apply for a new, a new SUP for a restaurant, a permitted use at this location. But if the intention is to operate as a restaurant, we wonder why the owner is spending so much time and money on this appeal.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman. We'll provide a copy of that to our secretary.
Christine Marmo, 8 Prospect Street, and I'd like this to be also submitted for the public record. And I'd like to follow up with what Dr. Nash had said. At the last ZBA, well, at the ZBA meeting, August 14th, Mr. Golden contended that the Board of Trustees did not have oversight over the building inspector. Common sense and past practice leads one to believe that this is not true. First, it would fly in the face of reason that only one person, the building inspector, in the whole of the Village of New Pauls, an unelected person, would wield such incredible power. The trustees do have oversight and have exercised this oversight in the past. Between 2009 and 2011, the trustees instructed the building inspector to issue citations to Ms. Tufano multiple times. These citations were issued because SUP conditions were blatantly disregarded. As per the trustees' instructions, the building inspector issued multiple citations concerning the berm. First, the berm was not constructed to the specifications of the site plan, and then the berm was breached. Since another condition of the SUP specifies no amplified music, the building inspector was not only instructed by the trustees to issue a citation for the live band Bounce Method playing loud and amplified music, the Board had to approve overtime for the building inspector on that late night, as bands do not even start playing until 10:30 or 11:00 p.m. One of the main problems with SUP enforcement, the infractions such as amplified music and closing times occur well after business hours held by a building inspector. So there is no question that in the past, the trustees have been the effective bosses of the building inspector. I'd like to address some of the points in her September 11th, 2012 statement. Ms. Moniz starts her letter by stating that she wants to clarify inaccuracies, when in fact, her account obscures rather than clarifies. One, throughout the entire statement, she continually refers only to a restaurant or dining area with no mention of the bar use. Mention of the bar is in fact notably absent, and yet, all that 127 Main has ever been, notwithstanding the weeks currently, it's always been a bar. Two, the stream of documents do not substantiate Ms. Moniz's claim that there was not a six-month gap in operation. In fact, examination of the timeline of the pertinent documents reveals quite the opposite. April 15th, 2011, C of O for Rascals was issued. Note that we know this from the receipts provided by Ms. Tufano as evidence of operations that Rascals stopped operating in May of 2011. July 15th, 2011, application for change of business to Gumps with Mr. Colangelo listed as the owner. This application was withdrawn by Mr. Colangelo on November 25th. In her letter, Ms. Moniz states that C of O was not issued for the application. Well, this document isn't even pertinent to documenting business operation. December 2011, January 2012, business change of occupancy issued to Gumps, but with Ms. Tufano as the owner. The actual date of issue is unclear, as Ms. Moniz wrote two different dates on the document, December 23rd and January 13th. And on the copy of the document we had foiled earlier, yet a third date was noted, January 18th, 2012. These are all attached to your packet. As clearly demonstrated, the dates on the relevant stream of documents indicates an eight-month gap in use from May 2011 until January 2012. We've attached a timeline which Dr. Nash has told you, document B. Not only did the dates of the stream of documents provided by the building inspector not support her contention that there was no six-month gap, but the use of the stream as evidence that a business is operational is questionable. Although Ms. Moniz claimed that Mr. Ariel said that such administrative action provides evidence of use, she took that statement out of context. Mr. Ariel did indeed state administrative action might be used as evidence of use. However, he provided clarification, and this is noted by the interchange below between Trustee Stuart Glenn and Mr. Ariel, taken directly from the April 25th, 2012 Village Board minutes. And we see, Trustee Glenn asked if administrative action alone is sufficient for the property owners to show that they had been opened for the correct amount of time. Mr. Ariel stated that there is some case law to support that type of argument, but he does not feel that the case law is persuasive. It is not enough to only have administrative action on the record. Ms. Moniz contended that Mr. Colangelo was conducting business on July 30th, 2011, ignored testimony by Mr. Colangelo and Mr. McKay on several occasions. These testimonies indicated that no business was conducted on July 30th. Notarized date was very catchy. And Mr. Colangelo had in fact never opened Gumps. Ms. Moniz obscured the facts by digressing to an issue that is irrelevant, the use as a restaurant without a C of O. True, there was no C of O for July 30th, 2011, but there was no restaurant either. Now we get to the issue highlighted by Ms. Tufano's lawyer. Did Ms. Moniz make the determination that the SUP had expired? In her September 11th, 2012 statement, she said, "I do not feel that there has been a gap of six months where the restaurant has not been operational." Yet, the documents that she uses to support this statement in fact indicate an eight-month gap. Furthermore, in her position as code enforcement officer for the village, she signed the official letter to Ms. Tufano stating that the SUP had expired, which provided the basis for Ms. Tufano's current appeal. Thus, in addition to the lack of clarity in the points made above, Ms. Moniz has even blurred her own position. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I actually have a letter on my Stephen Cook from Prospect Street. I have a letter from Elizabeth Harshaw, who was unable to attend tonight. She writes, this is Elizabeth Harshaw, 5 Prospect Street, and that is one of the properties that is as close to 127 as you can get. It reads, "Mr. Murtaugh is at it from day one again, opening day of Shay O'Brien's, and he advertises free food and drinks and buses them in literally from Pearl River, New York. This is an ongoing total disregard for SLA laws, more of the same nonsense. Mr. Murtaugh is the person on the liquor license now and was on the liquor license in 2008 with Ms. Tufano with Rascals. And she has a printout from Facebook, bus trip on Wednesday, October 17th, from Murty's to the opening of Shay O'Brien's in New Pauls. The 7:30 returns at 1:00 a.m. Please sign up at Murty's because space is limited. Complimentary food tasting and cocktails at Shay's from 8:00 to 10:00." And that, per SLA laws, giving away free liquor is not permitted. What I have to comment on is the filing last time in the public record of the short environmental assessment form. I'm not exactly sure why this was included, but there are a few things in here that upon a slightly closer look, some of the information is, if not incorrect, might need to be revised. This is, this environmental assessment form is filed in conjunction with the appeal of determination of the Village of New Pauls building inspector dated June 18th, 2012, wherein the special use permit for the premises owned by the applicant was, quote, "deemed expired," unquote. Number seven, amount of land affected is listed as 0.21 acres. I don't believe that includes the parking lot at 123 Main, which was referenced earlier as being part of the SUP, and also the site plan. Number eight, will proposed action comply with existing zoning or other existing land use restrictions? The answer is, appeal will reinstate the special use permit granted in 2006. I think that's a bit premature. I think perhaps successful appeal might be more accurate if you're going to go there, but I think that's perhaps a little bit, a little bit premature. Number nine, what is present land use in the vicinity of project? It states that the property is near the R2 zone, and I think as we have been discussing, it adjoins the zone, bringing it just a little bit closer. Number 11, does any aspect of the action have a currently valid permit? And it is boxes checked, yes. Technically, I don't think that is correct. If the SUP is expired- If the SUP is expired, then there is not a currently valid permit. And it says if yes, list agency's name and permit approvals. PBO 605, special use permit and site plan approved dated July 21st, 2006. This appeal seeks reinstatement of this permit. That's not what the question asks. The question asks, does any of the aspect of the action have a currently valid permit? So that is incorrect. As a result of proposed action, will existing permit approval require modification? Well, when applying for a bar, that does require a variance. Part two, the impact assessment, could any action result in any adverse effects associated with the following? Now, this document is written, the answers are, no, the environmental impacts that have been used were studied when the special use permit was issued in 2006. All of these headings have that same answer. But I think one of the mentions here, C1, existing air quality, surface or groundwater quality or quantity, noise levels. Well, I think we've proven that the amplified music, the bands that have played there, noise levels are definitely a factor here. It's been frequently a bar with amplified music. Also, when it talks about air quality, surface or ground quality or quantity, I would like to remind the board that at one point in the last few years, 10 feet of fill raised quite a bit of height in the space behind the building. So that is actually, that is a change. Trees were cut down, a number of other things. So, and I think the last question, is there or is there likely to be controversy related to potential adverse environmental impacts? And it's, the box is checked, no. And I think that, that is not the case. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would you give a copy of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's my turn.
Will you identify yourself, please?
My name's Richard Langlois. I was going home, not to go and strike out. This is absolutely ridiculous. I provided one evidence statements that I've been coming here since Matt. This is very simple math. The place was shut down in March, so let's give them the rest of March. April, not open. May, June I entered, July, August, September, October, November I left. That's eight months. December, I started to renegotiate. January, I started to get close to signing a lease. February, and you have the lease. I was supposed to re-enter. Pretty simple math.
Thank you.
All non.
Does anyone else wish to speak or to present anything to the board?
Yes. Tara Dugan, Village President, Prospect Street. Couple of points. Ms. Nash had referred to the certificate of occupancy from August.
Was it Wednesday?
It was, yes.
Yeah.
That C of O was not for Rascals. It was not for Rascals. It was not for the restaurant. It was for a previous building permit, which was issued before the planning board was even considering issuing the matter of Rascals. It was issued for an addition to the building on the east, very limited floor space, having nothing to do with Rascals. In fact, there was never a building permit issued for the conversion of the deli to a restaurant. And C of O closes a building permit, so since there was no building permit to close, there was no C of O issued for the conversion of the deli to a restaurant. The other matter is the validity of the SUP. State law, I think it's section 725, which defines the duties and powers of a planning board. Does not specifically, does not empower planning board to interpret the law. Therefore, all planning board decisions must be co-compliant. The planning board does not have the authority to issue a decision which is contrary to the code. And so, the SUP specifying a restaurant and a bar exceeded their authority. They have not the authority to do that. That should have come to you as the ZBA, because the ZBA is authorized by the state to interpret the law. By issuing that decision themselves, they preempted the authority of the ZBA. So, it should never have been issued by them as permission. It should never have been enforced. It should never have happened. And as to, yeah, the matter of whether or not it's six months, the code specifies that a use has been discontinued for six months or more, it expires, a non-performing use. And since the bar is a non-performing use, if you prove that the bar is not in operation, the bar use is expired. And I believe that Dr. Nash had presented to the board a while ago, a copy of the letter from the state liquor authority. And by that letter, they've had, they were holding the license at that time for seven months. And since there, as long as they are holding the license, new alcohol beverage may be sold. The bar use was not in practice. So you have it on the authority of the SLA that the bar use, the bar function did not exist for seven months, which is one month longer than the code requires. And as she said, Dr. Nash, the code simply states that it's expired. There's no other action required by the code. The book is placed there by the planning board, nobody. That's it. It's expired. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak or offer something to the board? Yes.
My name is Jane Bailey. I'm the attorney for the applicant. And I guess there's a lot of things that were said tonight that I want addressed item for item, many of which relate to the original special use permit back in 2006, which I don't believe is properly before the board tonight, whether or not that permit was valid or issued. A number of the comments related to issues between whether or not the village board has authority to direct the building inspector. Again, not issues properly before the board tonight. I would like to remind the board that we're here on the application for a, an appeal of the building inspector's determination. And I would like to ask the building inspector a question, that given your letter to the ZBA dated September 11th, 2012, is it your opinion that the special use permit issued in 2006 by the planning board is still valid? I'd like to ask the building inspector to answer the question.
That's not the purpose of this hearing.
I raised the question at the last hearing, and Mr. Lyons said he would need to consult with the building inspector beforehand, and so I was hoping that it would be answered in this one.
Well, we're not, we're not going to be issuing any, at the public hearing here, we're just accepting information. You know, if the building inspector feels that she can give an answer to that question, she's welcome to put it on the record. If she's not, the board's not going to compel her to give an answer.
Okay.
The hearing is still open.
I would like to then submit our withdrawal of our appeal. I'll read my letter into the record. Dear Chairman Budman and members of the ZBA, on September 11th, 2012, at the continuation of public hearing on this matter, the building inspector Kathy Moniz submitted a letter to the zoning board of appeals indicating that, quote, "I do not feel that there has been a gap of six months where the restaurant has not been operational." Ms. Moniz also verified that the letter which was sent to Ms. Tufano as the owner of 127 Main Street LLC on June 18th, 2012, represented the opinion of the village board and was sent at their direction. As the building inspectors made it absolutely clear that the letter dated June 18th, 2012, did not reflect her determination, but rather the opinion of the village board, we respectfully withdraw our appeal and our request for an interpretation of section 2012 39B of the Village Code at this time. Thank you for your attention to the meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry, Kitty, I gave you the original.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jane.
Actually, this is the original. I'll get this.
Could we just ask clarification, what section of the code was that?
Oh, the section of the code that we had.
Interpretation?
212 39B 5B.
212 39B, interpretation?
Yep.
5B?
Thank you for your time.
Chairman Budman, is the meeting adjourned? Is the meeting now adjourned? Are you adjourned in the meeting?
I'm, I'm about to.
Sorry, Chairman. Pardon me. Are we closing?
Please.
We'll wait. That, that section, just for people who are looking around, reads, "A special use permit shall be deemed to authorize only one particular special use and shall expire if the authorized special use shall cease for more than six months for any reason." That is, what I read was 212 39B 5B, which is, I believe, what I heard.
But that is not.
That's what's quoted on the letter.
There, we respectfully withdraw our appeal, because the building inspector has made it clear that it doesn't reflect her determination, and therefore, they can remain in business, is how I interpret that.
Thank you.
John?
Well, the appeal is withdrawn, and I think we have to take a look at what the implications of that are. There's another appeal that's been filed on, based on that same statement that was made by the building inspector, so we'll have to, we'll have to do some thinking about where this may affect the church regarding this issue. There's some other things that are in my mind about it, but I want to speak to the chairman about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Stelly. Is there anything else to come to the board while the hearing is still open? Not seeing anything or hearing anything or receiving anything, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I vote.
All right. Is there a second to that?
Yes, I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like, sign. So ordered. Now, there is another application that has come to us from Ms. Marmo and Nash. I will read to you the introduction to the application, and then we will deal with it. In her letter to Georgina Tufano dated June 18th, 2012, the building inspector Kathy Muniz made a determination that the SUP for 127 Main Street had expired. Ms. Tufano is currently appealing that determination. In a later statement and memorandum to the ZBA dated September 11th, 2012.
We, we need to think about what's going on here. We weren't sure that this was going to happen today. Was there a public notice given for this, for this appeal? Was there a public notice posted for our appeal?
No. Because of this.
Yep.
What's happening is just that the board will be accepting the appeal.
Okay, so we don't have to argue the appeal, is it?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't ask.
In a later statement and memorandum to the ZBA dated September 11th, 2012, the building inspector made a contradictory determination. In that memorandum, Ms. Muniz stated that there had been no six-month gap in which the restaurant had not been operational, which indicates that the SUP had not expired. We recognize that the public hearing for Ms. Tufano's appeal for the building inspector's first determination is still open, and that the ZBA has not yet made a decision. But according to Village Code, if we wanted to appeal the building inspector's second determination, that there had been no six-month cease in the use of a restaurant, we would have to submit our appeal application within 30 days of that determination. Despite our reluctance to increase complexity for a situation that is already quite complicated, in order to ensure compliance with Village Code, we are now submitting our application to appeal the building inspector's second determination, and that is attached. Inasmuch as the main issue that is before the board, and for which we had an open hearing and which has now been closed, I would suggest that the board table this application until there is a determination of the main issue, which would allow the request that Ms. Nash and Marmo made to keep alive their opportunity to appeal at a later time. I would now entertain a motion to table this under those circumstances.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman, before this is a vote?
Sure.
Is it the board's, is there, are there prescribed forms that the board uses for, for somebody coming in and filing an appeal?
It's the same form. It's the same, it's always the same form for, for ZBA matters. We only have one, one form. It's the access for area variances, use variances, and appeals.
Okay. And has that form been filed in connection with this, with this appeal?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this was dated October 10th. This is dated October 10th, so it's within the month, the fifty days.
All in favor of the motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. So ordered. Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Then let me thank you for your attendance and for your participation. We will render a decision at a special meeting of December the 3rd.
Is it?
No, that would be a regular meeting.
Yeah, we're closing. We have closed the door, so we have a new session. We have a new session to come here. We don't have much to do. Is that in a session to discuss?
No, we won't be there.
Mr. Williams?
If you'd like, I'll have all the documents, let's see if you can cheer up.
It's the second question.
Oh, so then it would be...
It can't be, it's election day.
I...
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is the third session. Second to this.
Okay, so that is happening here.
Yeah, that's a right...
Before you hope that home.
Yes. Okay. One, some streeting feeling.
I think we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Well, wait.
Rescind that.
I rescind that.
Let's find out what we're doing. There seems to be some question about where we're going and when we're going there, so what's our...
I actually think that at this point, we could go into executive session to discuss a matter of potential litigation.
No, I don't think you have, zoning boards of appeal can't go into executive session, but you can go into a closed session in order to get legal, obtain legal advice from your But I think the issue that needs to be resolved with the board is the question of whether this appeal still exists, you know, given the withdrawal of the appeal by the applicant. There may not be a need for the board to make any decision on this based on that submission.
I think we need to...
What I would like to suggest to the board is that we select or have Mr. Lyons select a date, not necessarily tonight, but soon, which we could meet in an attorney-client relationship to discuss this.
To obtain legal, you can obtain legal advice from me. If you have deliberations on the facts of the matter, that has to take place in an open session.
Right.
But we can have a meeting in which you ask for legal advice from me, and I provide that advice as part of an attorney-client privilege communication.
I would like some legal advice.
Pardon?
I would like some legal advice, yes.
Mr. Lyons, what responsibilities do we have to notify if I need to miss daily?
Well, the way that that would happen is that we would have to have a regularly scheduled meeting with the appropriate notices. The meeting would be opened, then the chairman would make the request to me for legal advice and for us to go into a closed session in order to have that discussion. We would go into a closed session, have the privileged communications, and then the board would emerge from that session. It may not do any other further business that night, but then you can do public business after you reopen, or you can just close the meeting.
We have a regular meeting coming up in November?
Yes, November 13.
Thirteen.
At work.
Shall we do it that night?
We can do it on that night if you want.
We can't do it. Wait, let me just make sure, yes, we have plenty of time to notice, sorry.
We can't just do it then.
No. He's advised if not. Sally?
Is the board prepared to say this evening what the withdrawal of the appeal means?
I'm not, and our attorney apparently is not ready to look.
I think it means it's withdrawn, but we're, you know, I'm gonna look into that before a final determination is made to make sure that we're correct.
No, I'm just, her letter states they are withdrawing...
Withdrawing the appeal, yep.
...the appeal with nothing else said.
Actually...
Second interpretation.
I would ask Mr. Lyons to review the original paperwork, because I believe there was two sections of the law. Am I, overstepping my bounds as the clerk?
No.
No.
Okay, go ahead. Please forgive me, I don't, but I do believe there were two sections that I noticed, because I noticed them as individual, as individual matters.
Say that again, Katie, I'm sorry.
I believe that I noticed them as individual, that there were two sections of the law that were quoted in the original application, because I noticed them as separate actions.
In her original appeal...
What was her interpretation? And that's what she said at the end, something about asking you for interpretation.
Well, they're in liberty to withdraw both forms.
And that's the question, right?
Mr. Lyons, I'm...
So, what you're saying is, did they withdraw one portion of the appeal and leave the other portion of the appeal on the table, that being an interpretation of what it means to have a special use permit expired?
Ms. Lyons, if I'm not, am I overstepping my bounds as the clerk?
Then you can raise the issue, sure.
Okay. I, 'cause in a completely impartial way, it just came to my mind that I remembered breaking it down into two noticing, and if I've, please stop me, 'cause I wouldn't, if I, if I'm about to do something inappropriate. The applicant is requesting relief of chapter 212-58C appeals. The Board of Appeals shall hear and decide appeals which are alleged that error or misinterpretation in any order, requirement, decision, grant, or refusal was made by the building inspector or other administrative official in carrying out or enforcement of the provisions of this chapter or any rule or regulations pursuant thereto. And 212-58B interpretations, the Board of Appeals shall, upon appeal of any decision or order or requirement by the administrative official or body, upon request of any official board or village, decide and any question involving the interpretation of any provision of this chapter, including determination of the exact location of any zoning district boundaries, if there is any uncertainty with respect thereto.
Okay.
There were two, there were two notices of two different sections.
Okay, I'm, my understanding is...
Would you see that we get copies of it?
Yes, sir. And I'll make sure that Ms. Daly receives.
My understanding is, it's the, I understand the distinction, but I would presume that the intention of the appellant is to withdraw all aspects of their appeal. If we need to get a clarification from that, we can.
I think we need to get a clarification of that.
I'd also like to ask the question about what effect does this have on the current business there, which apparently is operating in violation of the regulations?
Yeah, I need to give some thought to that before we...
Oh, I hope so.
Thank you.
This is a big one in the polls. SLA licenses are needing a lot of attention.
We are adjourned.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
I don't think we are adjourned yet, actually.
Good to see you adjourned.
We did not adjourn yet, Carl.
Yeah.
I think I may have interrupted your motion.
I withdrew my motion to appeal at someone's suggestion, so we haven't actually...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't adjourn before we have some of our initial questions answered, that they can be answered. If it's time for us to shut, well, that's gone. But I think there's a lot more here than is a change of appeal and the appellant, and that is what's happening with business as of tomorrow.
Well, I think, I think as far as first thing tomorrow morning, I don't have any information that would change anything. Also, you have to realize that the jurisdiction of this board is limited to hearing appeals and information on appeals that are presented to it. If the appeal is withdrawn, then you don't have any further business before you, and you don't have any authority to act beyond that scope.
No, we don't, I understand that, but our, the supervisor, the daily supervisor of the building inspector is here and has heard what we have heard.
Yes.
And I hope that there will be some action taken, if any is possible.
Well, there's a second appeal pending, you know, based on the September 11, 2012 statement by the building inspector. I think, you know, I have to look further into that, but, you know, that appeal may be going forward, and it's possible that they, that appeal may just revive the same issues that were presented in the, in the previous case.
Does the...
But it's a, it's a, it's a long and deep and very disturbing story about the operation of the building department in this case. Does the letter that was delivered to 127 Main Street by the building department stand?
Oh, that's the issue, that's probably an issue that's gonna be dealt with in the pending appeal.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, so if they withdrew their appeal, does that mean that the determination is currently, the village board's determination still stands? Or does that mean that what Ms. Moniz said in her testimony, is the determination of the building inspector?
I don't know the answer to that right at this moment.
Brian, I, I think that it's not the determination of the board of trustees. I think that the building inspector wrote a legal document and put it out as the building inspector.
That it was her determination that there's still, that there's...
I don't think I...
My opinion is, that's an open question that I don't know the answer to.
Okay.
That, that issue was raised earlier by some of the neighbors about, I don't know what the nature of that statement is. I can't tell you from a legal standpoint right now. It needs to be investigated, whether the statement by the building department on September 11, whether it rose to the level of a, an action by the building inspector that, you know, was appealable. I mean, there are lots of issues that spring from that, and we need to figure them out, rather than, I'm not comfortable shooting from the hip.
Prefer not to speculate on it.
Say this again.
You prefer not to speculate on it without...
Without understanding, it's kind of a screwball fact pattern, and you need to understand exactly what's being said and how the law would apply to that, so I don't know the answer to that.
Would you make, Carl, would you make sure that the two documents that I submitted this evening, which are the completed version of what should have been in the chronology, get to John?
I will make sure that everyone receives, as the clerk, I will make sure that not only the board, Mr. Lyons, and Ms. Daly also have the opportunity to see all documents tomorrow. I will make sure that it's priority, and I will copy you on it so that you are aware that it happened.
Very good.
So, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Issues that were raised by people who were making statements as part of the public hearing, that could in themselves be reasons why this business wouldn't, would no longer have an SUP. For instance, the fact that if indeed they, they didn't have a liquor license, and therefore they couldn't operate the SUP, that, that component. I guess what I'm asking is this, without, you know, picking at specifics, has enough been unearthed? So if it turns out that at this point, the ZBA doesn't have the authority to make something happen, that there is enough other information whereby who, I don't know, could say, wait a second, we, we can move on this because it's a violation of the SLA, or we can move on, which I assume would be the village board, that way.
It's possible that there may be other channels opened up by some of the information that came to light as part of this, as part of this appeal.
So that even if the appeal, for whatever reason, technical or otherwise fails...
The village, the village would have to evaluate that information, and then the next question after that is figuring, as a government, you always have to follow the correct procedural path to get from A to B.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
And that, I don't know what the answer to that is, all pined about what the options are and what's available, but that is something that the village, if it chose to, you know, could look into based on the information.
And act independent of everything that...
Or figure out how to act, if there's a desire to act.
Can I ask a question? If the, if the, if the appeal was withdrawn, that means that the SUP is expired, because the appeal was to expire, that of the expiration of the SUP. So if the appeal was withdrawn, it's expired, and they cannot have a liquor license with an expired SUP. That's against state law.
Unless Kathy's decision somehow overrides our decision. If Kathy says it hasn't expired, after we've said it has expired, we have to find out whose, whose is the final sec. Because, because if in her statement that's accurate, then really our determination doesn't make a difference, and then there's still...
This question cannot be answered this evening, because there are, there, at some point, we need to come to an understanding of exactly what the facts are. There are issues of jurisdiction, and there are issues with regard to, you know, authority and how this is applied to the information that's been presented, and I don't think, I mean, my recommendation is to the board is this was something that was unexpected, and we shouldn't be making decisions about it tonight. We need to think through what this means, and it's better to make the right decision than make a fast decision.
And in the meantime, they still...
Especially given all the effort that has gone into this matter up to this point.
Just one more point of clarification, because we submitted an appeal, it's deemed live, and that's pending. So that doesn't mean, that has not opened yet, so that appeal would not keep the business open, right? Until you actually opened that appeal. Right now, it's pending, it's tabled. So that appeal, if you decide this appeal was, if you decided this appeal was withdrawn, and this, and it stands that the SUP is expired, our appeal will not enable them to stay open.
Perpetuate the...
Because it's just, because it's tabled, is that correct?
I understand your question, and I don't think I can answer it until we've determined what the nature of the building inspector's statement, September 11 statement was, whether it's a determination or not.
And you're gonna do that in November?
We're gonna think about that between now and then, and we may do that then.
Okay.
I'm not gonna tell you anything definitive tonight, because we don't know. We need to gather our wool on this and understand how things are going. It's, may not be satisfying to you this evening, but it's the more prudent way to proceed to try to figure out what is correct and what's right under the law and to do it carefully.
I think we have been given good advice by our council.
And, Mr. Lyons, if, if they, if it was so deemed by Chairman Budman, just what I understand for noticing, if the board wanted to hold a meeting before their regularly scheduled board meeting, as long as it was properly noticed, and the other attorney was properly noticed, you could have an earlier meeting if you needed to. Is that, am I correct?
It's almost a time. I would say if it's gonna be at a regular scheduled meeting, then my meeting with the board should just be an agenda item on that meeting.
By making no decision...
Excuse me, one second, I have a question for John Lyons. The court stenographer was requested by the defendant.
The appellant.
The appellant.
Yep.
Correct? So this part of the discussion by the ZBA perhaps is not germane to requests by the appellant.
Let me say it again, Sally.
The court stenographer to your left was requested by the appellant. The appellant has withdrawn her appeal, therefore the court stenographer should not be...
Recording further meetings.
Recording...
Still a public meeting.
Right, and Mr. Anderson representing the other side of Ms. Tufano's case, he should still be with us.
And we're being televised.
Yeah.
And we're being televised.
I need a parliamentary.
Well, if great, of course.
We do, we don't, I, as I said, we have to figure out what the implications are of the information that we received this evening, that's all I can say.
And what we do and what we decide has not, no bearing on what the building department may do or decide.
Or the village board.
Or the village board.
Who directs the building inspector.
If, if the, if I am correct, the minutes should show that some time ago, we adjourned.
We did not.
We did not.
We did not.
Okay. I do need a parliamentary.
You need a motion.
No, you need a motion to adjourn.
I, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Okay.
You got it.
Thank you, Engle. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, whatever happens, I will not only properly notify the supervisor, make sure that you're on...